Good morning, everyone. You are welcome to another study session. As we take the last study session in this semester, and the topic is punctuation marks. Punctuation marks. Punctuation is crucial in helping language convey its intended meaning. The erroneous punctuation mark, or merely the wrong punctuation marks placed with, can dramatically alter a sentence's meaning and occasionally even make it utter nonsense. So when we say punctuation marks, it is very, very crucial in writing. It is very, very important in writing. And the learning outcomes for this study session now, by the end of the lecture, students should be able to identify the basic punctuation marks in the English language and also use punctuation marks appropriately in academic writing and other forms of writing. And when we say punctuation marks, it makes the readers to know the processes through which words are grouped together and how they are separated and properly determined by sentence structure. It also helps the readers to understand what writers express in the communication process. The principal punctuation marks, the principal punctuation marks, we have, we are going to discuss seven here. The first one is the full stop. We have the comma. We have the semicolon. We have the colon. We have an interrogative mark. We have exclamation mark. And we have quotation mark. Now let's start with the full stop. The full stop or period. It is either you call it full stop or you call it period. This marks the longest pause in speech and it uses, and it uses are listed below. No, only when you want to, when you want to pause, what to write, you indicate that sign. Full stop. It appears at the end of every declarative sentence. You know, whenever you are giving declarative sentences, you use full stop at the end of it. Take for instance, look at this example. "University education is the best." "University education is the best." This one is a declarative sentence. So it is expected that you insert your period at the end of that sentence. After abbreviations and initials of names, titles, degrees. Take for instance, PhD. PH, no, D. Period. USA. BS. MS. WHO. Doctor. O A. A journey, comma. E T C. To separate hours and minutes written in figures, we also make use of period. The plan starts at ten dot thirty P dot N dot and ends at four dot thirty-five A dot N dot. So differentiate between units of money. We also make use of periods such as naira and kobo. For example, her monthly salary is eighteen comma, no, fifteen kobo. Eighteen naira, fifteen kobo. And then, okay? We also have nine naira kobo at the end of it. Okay? Now, we also, let's go to another one, which is the comma. The comma, it marks a brief pause, not a long, not a longer pause. A brief pause in a sentence. And it is used to, number one, to separate three or more words of the same parts of speech, such as nouns, verbs, adjectives, or adverbs. Look at these examples. "I saw Akim Ayu, Shil and Olu yesterday." "I wrote, read, examined, and kept the documents." So these are the uses. This is one of the usage of comma. We also use it for, to mark phrases in a position. We use a comma to mark off phrases in a position. Look at this now. "Femi Falan, a brilliant advocate, is a great freedom fighter." When we say a, a position, this is where we talk, this is where we use two nouns, no, side by side, to talk about a person in two ways. When we make use of two nouns side by side to talk about just one person in two ways. You can see Femi Falan is also that, that great freedom fighter, we are, fighter we are talking about. And also a brilliant advocate is also that great freedom fighter. So we have made this, we have, we have used Femi Falan and a brilliant advocate, no, to, 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 to represent one person. We also use it to mark off the vocative in a direct speech. "Olu..." Let's discuss our presentation now. We also have separate words, phrases, clauses inserted into the body of a sentence. The inserted item will have a comma before and after it. "My father did." "My father did not, however, recover from his illness." "My father did not, however, recover from his illness." So that is just... Now, we also use to separate a subordinate clause from the principal clause. When the teachers are ready, the principal will be informed. Avoid the repetition of a verb. "Olu works as a teacher." "In turn, as a next." It's also saying, "And, and turn works as a next." So we have used a comma, no, to, to avoid repetition of that, "works." Separate co-adjuncts clauses in a compound sentence. Yes, this is a compound sentence now. "I came, I saw, and I conquered." We also need to mark off the clauses or phrases that introduce, that introduces a quotation. "He boldly declared, comma, 'I do not want a share of the dirty money.'" No, we also need to mark off parentheses, phrases. "The night of the initiation, a night of all alike, no other, three students were brutally murdered." To also mark off thousands and millions in figures, we have a ten, uh, uh, ten million three hundred seventy-four thousand, uh, two hundred thirty-four naira zero kobo was, was voted to screen the five, five hundred thousand applicants. Now, we also have that after five hundred, we have a comma there. "After items expressing assent and dissent." "Yes, I do, before and after an adjective or phrase formed with a participant, I mean, having passed the hygiene and bee examination, decided to continue his first degree course." "After collectives such as moreover, hence, therefore, nevertheless so, among others, moreover, it came late for the interaction." "After every group of abbreviations for academic degrees and other honours pertaining to a particular person." "Bolu Atifen, Bolu Tifetolusha, B Tech, M, eh, M Science, P H G. Chris Aputo, Garu Banbani, Ehcon, C F R." Note, a comma may or may not be used in writing a person's address. If it is used, it is required at the end of every line, except the last line that indicates the end of the address, where a full stop is used. So at the end of each line of address, we make use of a comma. And at the end of the whole address, you put a full stop so that to show that you have come to the end of the address. Now, take for instance, look at this example. Example number one. "Doctor A A Akiseli, General Studies Unit, comma, C coma after Akiseli, Federal University of Technology, comma, P M B, P dot, M dot, B dot, seven oh four, comma, Accoray, comma, Nigeria." Full stop. That is the end of that address. So at, at the end of each line of address, we make use of the comma. Why at the end of the whole address, we insert? Now, look at this one, no punctuation. No punctuation. Uh, you can omit it if you like. We have Doctor A A Akiseli, no, no comma there, General Studies Unit, Federal University of Technology, P M B, seven oh four, Accoray, Nigeria. So, we go to the next one, which is a semicolon. And then, it uses. It marks a longer pause than a comma. It is used to separate the clauses of a compound sentence if they contain a comma. "Eg, my uncle is a poor, uneducated, simple man, but I love him." You see, we have, we have this semicolon, no, to separate two clauses. Uh, the first clause is, "My uncle is a poor, uneducated, simple man." And instead of using full stop, and you start another, another clause or sentence by saying, "I love him." You have just, you can, you can just use a semicolon, no, to bring the two clauses together to make it a compound sentence. Now to separate clauses, which are closely connected in thoughts. "Eg, reading makes a full man. Confidence, a ready man. Writing, an exact man." So we also use it in place of a comma before coordinating conjunctions to emphasize contrast. "Eg, unregistered students can attend lectures this month, but as from February, fee defaults will be barred from attending lectures." The colon marks, no, uh, a more complete pause than the semicolon. We also need to introduce a formal quotation. Take for instance, Alistair Tothert. "Man is a social being, a social animal." To introduce a list of items or ideas. Uh, the subjects I like are the following. You see, the use of colon there. Chemistry, physics, biology, and yoga. We also use to introduce an explanation, a statement, or a proposition. The reason for my lateness, I did not get on any today. Into an interrogation mark or question mark. This is used only after a direct question. "Why are you a filter?" "Why did you get married?" We also use it after an indirect question. Uh, please, it is not used after an indirect question. Yeah, don't forget that we do not use, uh, question mark or interrogation mark, no, after an indirect question. For instance, we have this. "She asked me when I got married." This is, this one is an indirect question. We do not use question mark here. "I wanted to know why she was a footer." It is not used after a polite request. Please, after a polite request, we do not use the question mark or interrogative mark. For example, for examples. "Could you pass the salt, please?" That is not a question. It's just a polite request. "Would you kindly help that child to cross the street?" So you see, in this, it's not a question at all. Rather, it is a polite. Exclamation mark or interjection to express some heightened emotion of fear, surprise, admiration, happiness. "Ha, the boy is dead. What a great victory." To indicate emphasis in writing expressions that are shouted. "Oh, shut up." "Ure, ureli." We also use it to indicate emphasis in expressions, denoting cheerfulness. Exclamation marks may be doubled or treated. "Ipe, ipe, ipe, ureli." We also have quotation marks. Uh, for instance, we have a, they are also used, you know, as inverted commas. We have, you can have double quotation marks. You can have a single. Both are correct, but they must be used consistently. If you use, uh, some, they say, we use a single quotation marks for only, only words. Why double for, uh, for sentences? Whichever way, just make sure that either you use single for where only one word or you use it for a sentence, just make sure that you are consistent in using it. To indicate direct speech, we use a quotation marks. Look at this. For example, for example. "The lecturer said, 'I have never seen such a lazy student.'" You can see the use of a quotation mark here, which is single. So far, you are consistent in, in the usage of this. There is, I don't think there's any problem there. To mark off foreign words within a sentence. "I had loved Amala, with steel for dinner." Now to enclose slangs, technical expressions, and newly coined words, which may be held of harmony with the tone of a particular text. "It is dangerous to do business with a four one nine." You see now, we have used quotation mark to, to quote that four one nine, and also to enclose a word said sarcastically. Example. "She is a real beauty." You see, beauty in a quotation mark. "Yet, and this is even frightens babies." You see, this one, I think it is sarcastic. Now, inverted commas in titles. For the titles of radio, television, or programs, poems, articles, and other writings which appear within another text, such as a book, journal, among others. "Ozzy Mandius is one of Shelley's most well-known poets." "OSRCTV has, you see, a repeat or spot update on Fridays at ten P M. Our paper, 'Climate Change Discourse: Student Perspectives,' has been accepted for publication by a local, a local journal." Now let's go to clauses. What is a clause? A clause is a group of words with a subject and a predicate or a verb. That is a clause. It is also a group of words with a finite verb. I think that one sets the whole story. A clause is a group of words with a finite verb. There are two main types of clauses. We have the main or independent clause or principal clause. We have the subordinate or dependent clause. You see, the main clause contains at least a subject and a verb. It can stand alone as a complete sentence. Why that of subordinate or dependent clause contains a subject and a verb? Unlike an independent clause, it cannot stand alone as a sentence. It begins with a subordinate conjunction, such as, "because," "though," "if," "as," "since," "when," "why," "until," "who," "where," "wherever than," "that," and so on and so forth. There should be at least one main clause in every complete sentence. Punctuation clauses. When two main clauses are joined by a coordinating conjunction, such as, "hand," "or," "but," "nor," "for," "yet," "so," place a comma before the conjunction. That is it. Uh, the, uh, the, 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 the team met, but I wasn't there. For closely related main clauses not connected by conjunctions, join with semicolons. "The teammates, we left early." When a subordinate clause follows a main clause, no punctuation is inserted. You see, "I know because I was there." You see a subordinate clause coming after a main clause. "I know." When a subordinate clause comes before a main clause, place a comma before the main clause. "Though I was away, the team met as scheduled." Conductive adverbs. Adverbs that connect ideas are described as conjunctive adverbs. A list is provided below. "Accordingly," "also," "besides," "consequently," "conversely," "finally," "for the more," "ance," "however," "indeed," "instead," "likewise," "the while," "moreover," "nevertheless," "next," "nonetheless," "otherwise," "similarly," "still," "subsequently," "then," "therefore," "thus." You see, punctuated conjunctive, uh, adverbs. If a conjunctive adverb begins a sentence, you place a comma after it. "Therefore, comma, this problem deserves attention." If a conjunctive adverb comes in the middle of a clause, place comma, eh, commas on either side of it. "This problem, comma, consequently, comma, deserves further study." If a conjunctive adverb ends a clause, place a comma before it. "This problem deserves further study, comma, however, full stop." If a conjunctive adverb comes between two main clauses or complete sentences, place a semicolon or period before it and a comma after it. "We were tired." A semicolon, no, "Therefore, we made mistakes." "We were tired, comma, therefore, we made mistake." Phrases. What is a phrase? A phrase is a group of words without a finite verb. Phrases usually named first, uh, named for first grammatical elements. We have propositional phrase in the software on the desktop of the designer with a customer. We also have that phrases to run the program that going, uh, going at top speed, conceived by the designer. We also have adverbial phrases. We have before distribution, after development, during the design phrase. We also have punctuation phrases. When a phrase perceives the subject of a main clause, place a comma before the phrase. You place a comma before the phrase. "I took in the morning and worked in the office, but in the afternoon, I visited the sites." When a phrase follows the subject, verb, or a complete clause, punctuation is not usually needed. "I work in the office in the morning, not I work in the office in the morning." This is not accepted. When a present participle of verb, verb I N G, phrase comes after a complete clause, a comma usually perceives it. Look at this example. "He left early, forgetting his five o'clock appointments." We have adjective or relative clauses. Qualify nouns or noun phrases in sentences and begin with relative pronouns such as "who," "which," "that," "whose" are embedded in another clause, are either restrictive or non-prescriptive. Restrictive relative clauses provide essential information about the subject or define the subject. Look at this example. "Team leaders who were, who lacked patience intimidate new members." Not all team leaders lack patience, but we have some who lack patience. We also have non-prescriptive relative clauses provide additional information that is not essential to the meaning. Look at this. "The replacement part, which was promised for two weeks, was finally shipped yesterday." The replacement, the replacement part was finally shipped yesterday. Punctuated relative clauses. Because restrictive clauses are required for meaning, use no punctuation. "Employees who wear t-shirts to work make a poor impression of foreign visitors." Employees make, no, a poor impression of foreign visitors. Forget, look, look, just look at that where adjective, relative clause, "Who wear t-shirts to work?" That is it. Okay? Now, because non-prescriptive clauses provide information that could be omitted, place them within a pair of commas. "My preferred solution, which was discussed yesterday, has been chosen by the team." Now let's see, let's see the better way. "My preferred solution has been chosen by the team." Look at the relative clause there, which was discussed yesterday. Types of phrases. We have the noun phrase, the noun phrase. We have the adjective phrase. We have propositional phrase. We have acrobatic phrase. The noun phrase, this is a group of words with a noun head that occupy the position of the noun, no, either the subject of the verb, the object of the verb, the complement of the object, the complement of the preposition, also as an apposition. So it can be pre-modified by articles, pronouns, or adjectives. That is noun phrase for you. Take for instance, the boy, that is a noun phrase. Our hus, our husband, that is a noun phrase. The, the dirty girl, that is a noun phrase. Verb phrase, this is a group of words that is usually made up of a main verb and one or more auxiliary verbs as optional elements. We also have adjective phrase. This is a group of words which qualifies a noun or a pronoun in a main clause. We have propositional phrase. This is a phrase that starts with a preposition and ends with a noun or a noun, eh, or a pronoun. We also have a adverbial phrase. This is a group of words, no, this is a group that modifies a verb, no, an adjective, or another adjective. Inserted information. Commas, parentheses, or dashes separate inserted information from the rest of the sentence. "Commas suggest minor interruptions." Jill Smith, comma, "President of M B I will revisit the site next week." "This procedure, which is clearly superior to the existing one, will be unpopular with certain departments." Parentheses often indicate optional information or clarifications. "Some organisms live in an anaerobic, that is airless environment." Parentheses are also used to enclose numbers of an, or letters. "The procedure involves three basic steps. One, strict, two, deep, three, dry." Dashes provide a greater sense of separation or emphasis that commas operate in parentheses than commas operate in parentheses. All three modules, no, uh, X L, X N, and X N are installed. Dashes are also used so signal aside. Dashes are effective if not overused. "Everyone must now wear identification cards, no, a consequence of the recent rash of theft." A comma, so a common, uh, comma error. The comma splice, a comma splice is an error in which two independent clauses joined by a comma. "When we add a nice time, I hope we can meet again soon." Look at another one. "The internet has revolutionized the business world. Online sales have increased dramatically this year." Look at the correct one. Inserting a conjunctive between the two independent clauses. Inserting a conjunctive between the two independent clauses, starting a new sentence. You know, inserting a semicolon between the independent clauses, where the topics of the independent clauses are closely related. Let's see the correction now, we add a nice time, and I hope we can meet again soon. We add a nice time, full stop. I hope we can meet again soon. The internet has revolutionized the business world. Online sales have increased dramatically this year. We also have the internet has revolutionized the business world, comma. So online sales have increased dramatically this year. Punctuation changes meaning. Woman without a man is nothing. Woman without a man is nothing. Watch out, man eating eggs. Watch out, man eating eggs. We also have, let's eat, grandpa, let's eat, grandpa. So, we can punctuate the following sentences in two ways or more. We are going to learn to cut the paste kids. When I sing well, ladies feel sick. When you, thank you for, uh, thank you, your donation just helped someone get a job. Most of the time, travelers worry about their love. Now we have come to the end of this study session, nine. You see, without punctuation, the English language will be very difficult to comprehend as punctuation adds ceilings into nation to our work. Using a, a comma, a full stop, an exclamation mark, or a question mark can help us to pause, stop, stress, or ask a question. Writing is more precise and clearer when punctuation is used correctly because it enables the writer to pause, to stop, or emphasize specific sentences or clauses. So now we have come to the end of, uh, this study sessions for this second semester. I believe you have gained one or two things, uh, during the course of this lecture. See, when we meet again, thank you very much for listening. Do enjoy the rest of your day. Bye bye.